Right here. Okay, um, call the meeting to order. Oh, okay, roll call, sorry.
Nancy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Yep.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, upcoming legislation?
We've got one piece we're working on, and that's subject to council's decision on what we're gonna do with the GoDappGo for the second heating option. Once we determine who we're gonna go with and what the contract is, we'll have the legislation before council.
Okay, what about the, um, the one-way on First Street, that legislation? We were supposed to go over that today.
We, yeah, we need to, we'll need to formalize that this evening. I need to talk about it.
You need to, right, you need to tell me.
Okay.
What exactly
Okay.
you all are ordering so that we can have a clear record in the meeting minutes here.
Good.
So anything else for Bill?
We've got some loose real estate matters coming in with Rick and Barker and their real estate attorney, uh, working with real estate attorney in our office. A couple of rezoning matters that'll come up with the developments coming into town, but short of that, uh, nothing else in upcoming.
Okay, there's nothing else? We'll move on. There's like some chairs. There's more in there, Joe. Okay.
That was working out there.
Learning here. Okay, let's, um, next is the Canova rezoning request. Wait till it gets in here.
Um, it looks like there's at least one or two big ones. I've got individual ones I can hand out at least.
I think I have the big ones right here. I've got it.
This has an aerial and a, I know you guys have the printout, but I wanted to give you an overview of the property too, so I'll give you a turn of diagonals and make them look better. Does the aerial show?
I take one of those, Bruce?
Yep.
Uh, yes. Yeah, pardon me too.
Wood.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I hand you one, Bill?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, everyone, as always, we appreciate your time. Sure, you know what it was, right? We appreciate your time. Uh, today we wanted to come and speak with you about the rezoning of, uh, what we've been calling the Jan Farm, which is over on 104. If you take a look at the second page of what I, I popped out, it will give you an overview aerial that might help just to orient everyone to where it's at. So north is facing up towards the title page here. So this is north. This is the corner of the Red Road and 762, or 104, I'm sorry, 104, with this being the property that we recently rezoned and we now have a data center user for. The property that we're talking about is the property directly to the south and west that loops here. So what we've done is we are hoping to capitalize on our recent success with data centers. As everyone knows, uh, the, as you can see from construction, uh, kind of stalling out on the east side of 104, the warehousing market has declined as we suspected. And we are trying to capitalize while the market's hot, uh, to be able to bring data centers, potentially more data centers into the village onto this property. To do that, there are a couple of things running in our benefit. One is we know these data centers like to cluster together. So knowing that we, uh, have a data center user, um, for the current property that's just to the north, we know we have a good success there. The second is, is that we know there is a need for data centers in the central Ohio area, uh, for even more than we already have projected. And we know that the Village of Commercial Point is specially suited, uh, both from just the location standpoint, but also the utility infrastructure because the administration and the council had the foresight to ensure that our utilities were robust enough to handle these types of infrastructures. What we've done is to keep it simple. The development text, did everyone see that? We have copies. Okay? If anyone needs a copy, let me know. But the development text that we are proposing is identical to the development text that we utilized six months ago to the property to the north. In an effort to, uh, like I said, try to keep it consistent. But we want to get feedback from the village. Obviously, all the properties are unique. Uh, we know this property, um, is something that the village at one point was a little hesitant to allow us to do any sort of, uh, industrial development on, especially warehousing. But with this being, uh, a use that is so minimally invasive, both from a traffic standpoint, we all know the schools are a hot button issue. We take the, the burden off of the schools and we're able to still make it an economically viable project. So with that, I don't know how much you've had an opportunity to kind of look through the materials, but we were hoping to be able to get one feedback on the project in general, any specifics, uh, that the village is concerned about, council's concerned about. Basically, what we need to do to get a yes from, uh, council and what we hope to be relatively short time. One of those things is, uh, you know, we, we came in and we had hoped to start this process some time ago, but obviously council's position on contemporaneous annexing and zoning haven't shifted. So we're a little later to the game than we had hoped and we know that it is, uh, kind of a time critical thing. It's one of those situations where we don't have a project of this size and someone's looking to invest your dollars, as we have told everyone repeatedly, we're not the only person that they're looking at. And as we learned the hard way from the Honda battery plant, um, if you're not ready when they are, they'll just find somewhere else real quick. And that's why Pickway County doesn't have the Honda battery plant. So hoping, like I said, to capitalize on, um, just the confluence of very positive factors. So with that, Bill, did you have anything else to add to that?
Oh, we appreciate you guys, uh, inviting us in and, uh, Bruce said we'd like to hear, uh, any comments or critiques or, you know, over the next, uh, several weeks, we'd like to get this, uh, basically the way you guys are happy with it. And then we are moving forward. As soon as this is rezoned, we are moving forward with, uh, closing on the property with both the Al's, uh, Jan and Jim Jan estates, so.
Yeah.
You haven't closed on this yet?
No, we, we have an option on it based on entitlements. And without the entitlements, the property is, it is really hard to develop, obviously. So we have an option on it. The Jan families have been, uh, gracious enough to allow us time to, to get the entitlements that we need in place to make this an economic viable project.
What's your, what's your timeframe on that? What was allowed?
Uh, we have extensions, um, we need to get this wrapped up before April.
By April, by, by, by the March.
In the March, very, very latest, yeah. So with that, that's kind of why I was mentioning the timing. Um, we're definitely, uh, you know, we've, we've been able to get, uh, I believe the public hearings on the 25th of February. We're hoping that, that we may be able to actually have the first reading at a, a meeting directly after that and then try to do some, um, probably beg for a special meeting again and maybe awaiting of readings, depending on what the public, you know, has to say about the project to try to fit us into that timeframe. So we are pressed up against the law.
I don't see it being that quick, I'll just be honest with you. I mean, because the residents that didn't like the first one are probably really not gonna like this one because it kind of, they'll feel like it infringes more. It's closer, they're gonna be worried about the same things, that the lighting, because data centers usually have, you know, pretty bright, bright lighting, you know, as they should. This, this woods, you're gonna get rid of part of it, they're not gonna like that because it's gonna disturb wildlife. So they're not, I don't know that we're gonna be able to waive the readings without them, you know, having them. I'm just being honest with you, you know, how the, the public is. I'm not saying I have a problem with it, but I don't know that you're being realistic, honestly.
Well, we are doing the best we can with what we've been given. We have, like I said, that's why we hope to start the process soon. Um, I think that, uh, from a, a public perspective, we had brought this before council previously and there were some, there were some concerns. We've obviously tried to mitigate, uh, any impact to the wooded area. We originally had buildings strung through that and most of it being removed. So we now only have the singular building taken out a small parcel, a small piece of that wooded area. We've also tucked everything to the northern property line such that there would be significant spacing between the nearest residents, and we in my subdivision to the south, uh, and put all of the, uh, retention ponds to the south to provide additional buffer. So we have taken some of the concerns that we know are going to be there, that are going to be prevalent. Instead of trying to, we probably could have fit, in fact, I know we could have because we had a, an initial drawing that had another eight buildings, or six buildings on this property. But we know some of the concerns in the community for sure, what they're going to be. So we have tried to take steps to ensure that those are already accounted for as much as possible.
My only concern is the industrial. I mean, you know, most of us in here, um, minus you, you two, because you're new, we, we've pretty much, so we don't want warehouses on that side of the road. So that is the issue I have with this stuff.
So instead of the, so we, again, we narrowed it, so we have the flexibility to potentially do warehousing if data centers did not work out. Is that what you're talking about? So if we limit it to data centers and submit a new zoning text that removed all references to anything but data centers, that would make you more comfortable?
Personally, me, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but...
Well, again, I'm, I'm looking for into everyone, you know, what.
Do you have preliminary design plans? I know you've got the text from the last survey you've been, if you have preliminary design plans.
No, we have no elevation drawings because it'll depend on who that end user is. They would then bring their major site plans in and they actually, as, as it's a PID, um, now this is the initial stage of a PID. You'll notice that, uh, when we did AWS, we, we actually utilized the second stage of the PID, which may require us to bring in a development plan. In this instance, because we have more insight into what this will be, we anticipate that, that second phase of the PID coming in with more, a little bit more detail, uh, and hopefully those elevation drawings at that point. Because again, there's three or four steps to approval for anything on this property. First would be this preliminary PID text getting the, the zoning text in place. Then we have to come back in with a final development plan under the zoning text. And then there's major site plans that also have to come back and before council. So there's a lot of, of other pieces. This basically gives us the opportunity to show that the village is, well, interested in this sort of, of entitlement for this particular piece of property so that we can go out, market it, find the end user and then bring them in as we have previously so that they can show you what it's gonna look at, what their commitments are, what the building sizes are, and then the village can, again, make that decision at that second level. This just gives us the opportunity to open the door before this sorts of negotiations.
So assume you'll do the line, the line of sight and all that so that it's not, you know, it doesn't, that's what a, a lot of the, the neighbors did complain, but I know what, when the DHL was gonna go in there, you did the line of sight so it would, you know, use the
Yeah.
different lighting. I mean, you did a lot of changes.
Yeah, and, and those are all, like, again, that, all of that, the, the one to three candle, foot candles and all of those things were incorporated here. Obviously, the buffering is different because we're not up against a road with neighbors that close. We used, uh, significant spacing, um, to, to kind of do the buffer and then instead of elevated mounds, we have the, the retention ponds and those sorts of things. And moved, again, everything to those far northern boundaries instead of, uh, when we originally did the DHL, we had buildings, you know, as far, as close to direct road as possible. Um, so that's kind of where the, the mound definitely came from there.
And the multi-use path, since that'll be, the exact location will be determined later. You know, the, what we talked about when it was DHL is hooking up, you know, site of crossing to come over and go through Foxfire and make that connection. Is that something in the way of there still?
Yeah, no, that's still there. So if you recall, when we, the text for the northern property, because we weren't sure what the building utility layout would be for that complex.
Yeah.
It says that we have to go from this, the, that path will go from the site of crossing entrance to a point on the south, either on the east or the west side. Because we don't know if it's going to be on the east or the west side for the northern property, we kept ours at connecting from wherever they go to to the south of the property, which would then get us, uh, you know, towards the MI property. So that's what we're trying to do is keep that. But because there's a, it's not as concrete or laid out, but yes, with the intent being that it was, okay, it's gonna continue to connect south.
I, I gotta ask you. So if this is approved, this, these drawings could go to crack and you could put one great big 40 million square foot warehouse, yes?
No.
No.
Okay, it has to stay as this number, that this is really...
We take out the industrial out of there.
Yeah, proposal at this point. And my understanding, you're gonna handle this the way of, with the other one, with the planned industrial?
Yes, so this would be...
PID, so they'll have to come in with a, with a layout plan that says this is what it's gonna look like from wood, according to woodwork. Step one is to rezone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Step two is to come in with the plant for the PID, yeah.
But like I just asked him, you know, we weren't really for industrial warehouses on that side and he's like, so you'd be okay if it was just data centers? And we take that industrial out?
Yeah.
So...
So the way that the neck, they're, like I said, it's multi-steps to get to development, right? So this is the first step of a PID for rezoning. But the code states that we don't get a zoning certificate until the second stage, which is a, uh, they call it a final development plan. Right? And that's the second stage of rezoning. And that only happens once we have an end user. Now, what the code says is that it has to be very similar to this. Otherwise, we have to come back to council and say, please, give us approval. And if you don't give us approval, it doesn't happen.
Then go back to this.
Okay, well, it would...
The due point, the due point.
Yeah, and so we would have to resubmit completely, um, if there were any major deviations from this. So like if the building count changed, if the building positions changed drastically, if the sizes changed drastically, all of that would have to be reapproved by council, not once but twice, right? Because first, we're gonna come in and that, once we come in with the final development plan and we bring you a picture and let's say it's this exact one, and you guys say, okay, it doesn't deviate, here's your approval. Then we have to come in with a major site plan package, which then goes through detailed engineering drawings, at which point, and those are gonna have the elevations, what it looks like, what the heights are and, and detailed specificity. And that all goes through not only the technical review board, but also comes back to council for ultimate approval. So there are many steps before we get to, uh, what's going to be there for sure. This is what we believe is marketable and we hope that, um, whoever would buy it would be very close to this because what they're getting from us is going through this entitlement process, right? We're trying to show them that, hey, something very close to this, the Village of Commercial Point is okay. If it's much different than that, we ha, we can't make any guarantees as to what they're going to do. But we're giving them assurances on the best that we have an option for. Obviously, there may be tweaks. They may say, oh, well, we don't even want this building, we're gonna delete it. Or this building, if that doesn't work, we gotta ship it back. Our buildings are slightly smaller, so we wanna do something a little bit different.
Looking for one end user for the entire thing?
Yes.
Not multiple, one end user?
It would be this, ideally, and so, for instance, on the property to the north, which is a very similar size, it's one end user for the entire thing. Our goal is that it be one end user for this entirety of the property. Now, there's a chance market could change and something could differ there, but our, our goal at this point and our thought is that this will be one end user as well. And they typically do one end user on a project like this because they, it, the one, security and two, the utility infrastructure that goes into something like this, people, it's too hard, too complicated to break up between multiple entities. So it's usually a single entity unit for a data center.
How are we gonna handle these swales? Uh, we've got, we've got this collection. I can't call it trivia, too small, but the swales that are, that are, are this, uh, these gonna be rerouted or are they gonna be taken underground or what?
Well, that is definitely, so, I mean, that, the swales are definitely why we aren't putting anything in the northern quarter. The reason the retention pond's there because some of them are more impactful than others. They have more flow going through them. That's more of a, I think that gets to a, more of a major site plan engineering perspective.
It does.
Where, you know, once they take a look at what's finally there, they'll run their calculations and determine whether or not they need to be routed. They're, they're gonna be riprap, they're gonna be maintained and we're gonna put bridges and whatever that looks like. That's more of a two steps down the road kind of question, I think.
What is this, uh, we indicate here, water tower? Tell me about that.
Um, so we're not sure if we need it, right? So what we did is we asked the engineers to give us plans on a, uh, on a spec-built data center complex. Um, obviously, we know there are heightened water requirements for those. Very well, given the, the infrastructure improvements that are going to be made to the village, it may be that there are no additional water infrastructure improvements that need to be made. But because we are, you know, obviously looking at it as if it's today and that infrastructure's not built yet, they put a water tower here as a, we might need it, we don't know yet.
Besides, we don't have an idea of cooling or?
Yeah, so...
Non-podable?
Non-podable cooling. This is just to support their usage there, unless the village obviously needed something different. But yeah, the idea is that that would support the cooling infrastructure necessary should the village infrastructure need supplementing.
And that's gonna be seen from the road?
Not necessarily. Uh, there's...
Could we make you do a ground glue?
It, it could.
Or ask you to?
Well, there's, there's no, it just has a placeholder for one.
Yeah.
There's nothing saying what its criteria...
This is the farm plan.
Yeah, this is nothing saying what the criteria looks like. This is just saying, okay, if we have to have a water tower, it makes sense to go here.
Yeah.
Uh, just on the layout. What it looks like would then come at the final development plan and the major site plan. And if, you know, the village said, look, for aesthetic perspective, this needs to be underground or it needs to be ground storage or whatever that looks like, yes, those are things that would come.
And, and that's something that you would fight for being done. I mean, if we give the olive branch to let this possibly go ahead and that comes too, is that something you're gonna make sure that's done or is it gonna be a fight for us to get it to our specifications?
So our perspective on it is, uh, nothing should be a fight for the village, right? Once, so this gets approved, if it comes back to you, right, when it comes back to you as a final development plan, we always tell our end users, this is the, you know, the village has a desire to protect a lot of its, you know, as much of its sightlines and as much of the, of, of the aesthetics that it can and you're gonna have to play ball with that. So from our perspective, uh, the end user's gonna kind of do it or they're not doing it. There's a reason that DHL was going to have to build a 45-foot tall mound, uh, 37-foot tall mound in places, okay? Unheard of in industrial developments anywhere in central Ohio and based on what I know from the DHL folks, anywhere in the country. I think they may have said the world at one point. Don't quote me on that. But what I'm getting at is, yes, that, that was us telling them, if you want to come and participate in the Village of Commercial Point, this is what it takes to do it. And if they don't wanna participate here, they don't wanna participate here. This is just us getting that door open to see who wants to come to be a partner with the village. And if they wanna be a partner with the village, council has made it very clear, there are certain things they're gonna be okay with and certain things they're not, and they don't bend, uh, necessarily if it's not something that's going to be of use to the village. Well...
Eric, one quick thing, sorry.
No, no, you're good.
So one, one thing I'd like to add on to that is, once this is approved and we bring an end user in, we hope, it might be our buyer from the north, it might be a totally different one. These data center, so far, the, over the last couple of years of us dealing with these data center users, cost is not, they're, they, I'm, I'm sure you've seen what Google's building behind Sine of Downs.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it, and the, our current buyer has already been very generous with the village. This will give the administration and council, once when we do bring them in, I'm sure there's gonna be another round of negotiating. Uh, because they are gonna need entitlements on this property, I'm assuming. The TIF will need to be expanded or a new TIF made, a new CRA, things like that.
So you're not gonna come in and ask for more money for those, like, change the figures again, right? You wanted to change interest rates and stuff last time, that's not gonna happen this time.
Uh, well, no, not this, that's a whole different conversation. Let me tell you this, there's, there is definitely a chance at some point in the future, we ask you to change the interest rate and the TIF again. It will be a direct result of this property? No.
Okay.
What, this property is not currently part of the TIF or part of the CRA, right? So there are, there are many hurdles to make this property marketable, right? This isn't turnkey like the property to the north was. This is step one of about nine that are going to have to take place in order for us to make this marketable. So the first is going to be obviously the, the rezoning entitlement. Once we have, know that rezoning, a, and again, they're, they're kind of done in order of what they cost uh, from an entitlement perspective, right? So rezoning is kind of the first step. We figure out if that's what's something the village wants. If the village wants it, we get it rezoned, then we move forward with financial entitlements. So we have to come to the village and say, hey, we went out to the market, the market says we need a CRA and a TIF on this property. What does that package have to look like? It's not going to look like the, the property to the north. I know that, I know that Wendy's not here, but I will tell you that she's very clearly told me terms of any TIF coming in are gonna have to be different, right? She personally, as the fiscal officer, has learned a lot about TIFs. The village has learned a lot about TIFs. We have learned a lot about TIFs, since the first one was put in place. So I'm sure it's going to look different. What it looks like is going to be a mutual agreement between everybody, right? What, we'll tell you what we, the terms that we think are necessary to bring folks in and the village can say whether or not it's something they can work with. And if so, then we go to the next step. Uh, obviously, we need the TRA, we need, we need a CRA, we need a TIF. And once those are done, then we'll, we'll have an end user that's willing to put forth the engineering dollars to come in with the final development plan and then we'll bring that to you and you guys will give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And if you get a thumbs up, then we probably get to closing. And then if we close, we step out, just like on the property of the north and the end user comes in and then they have to bring in their major site plans. And that's between, yeah, you know, the village and the end user. So that's, that's where we're at, where, we're still, annexation was obviously the first step, but we're still pretty early on. There are still a lot of things that are gonna have to occur before we get to that point.
I just don't want to see multiple buildings like we have on the east side. Even though this steps back further, that's one of the biggest complaints that I hear from everybody that drives down there, whether they're part of the village or not. You know, you've got pads, you've got this and, you know, it was like, I know that's out of your control. And part of that may or may not have been caused by village council at the time, I don't know. But, you know, that's my concern with it possibly not being an end user, number one. Number two, I didn't like that you wanted to limit the number of trees, especially if you're taking out a whole bunch. I like our original where it's more trees. Trees are cheap. So for you to ask for us forever, because whatever we approve here is on that land forever, that whoever comes in doesn't have to, you know, put a lot of trees. I mean, let's, let's face it, green is where it's at, you know? And then would, if this goes not one end user, you're wanting us to allow multiple 12-foot high signs at 104?
No, it's still just one sign. That, that, it only allows for one sign.
Does it have to be 12 feet? That's not high. I mean, we don't want it to look crazy, I mean...
Yeah, well, I will say that from the sign perspective, I'm no truck driver, but I know that truck drivers actually, I think, came and spoke at one of the meetings because when we had the sign stuff come up, or maybe they passed something on through council members and it, the signs had a lot to do with the visibility as you're traveling 50 miles down the road and how far away you can see them.
That's a huge sign. The one they're proposing, there's a huge sign.
Uh, I think it's...
It's doubling the size of the... Yeah, it goes from six to 12 feet, right? And the, the size of the sign, I mean, I know that's, that might be put in a cart before a horse, but...
Well, I mean, if that's an issue, we can definitely take it back. I will tell you, I think that size of the sign is based off the size of the sign on the current Canova property. Right? So if you go down, there's the, the sign that is put in, uh, right in front of the, what would have been Haynes Building across the street. I believe that's a 12-foot sign, isn't it?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that it is. I remember we...
Yeah, so it's this, it's the same size as the sign you've been driving past. And, and if that seems to be obtrusive, then we could definitely, I, I, I mean, I'm just...
I'm gonna be honest, I don't mind the, the warehouses on that side. I
Yeah.
I see dollar signs, but I know that a lot of people have, have brought that up.
And yeah.
I need to be able, as a council member, if somebody asks me to benefit, I need to be able to, uh, so far, I, I really don't hear a benefit for us changing from what we adopted in our book. I guess that's what I need to hear from you.
Well...
What, but what benefits does the village have for kind of giving you, kind, I, I don't wanna say a blank slate, but you know, a slate that you have come up with now, unless you change anything, what's the benefit to this?
The benefit is that we get to bring people to you. As it sits now, you don't do anything. That ground doesn't have an opportunity for us to market it, to the folks that, uh, so for the premier buyers that we've been able to bring in thus far, we have to have as turnkey-ready as possible because for them, time is money and they're not going to sit around and invest what's going to end up being billions of dollars unless we can give them almost guaranteed assurances that their project will work for here, right? So as the ground sits now, it doesn't work. This is based upon our experience specifically with the property to the north and what it took to be able to get that premier buyer to come into the village and be willing to invest that sort of money and, you know, involve themselves and partner with the community. So that's where all of this comes from. If the village is interested in capitalizing on this piece of ground in a similar manner, this is very, very close to what we need. Limiting it to data centers, definitely can do. I mean, we potentially can preserve the trees, like if, if the, uh, I know Ross had a concern about the trees and we tried to minimize the impact to the trees on this corner. If you guys are telling us that any impact to the trees, we can definitely go back to our folks and see if that still makes the project financially feasible, um, from their perspective. So again, it's, it's one of those things, like that's what, those are the things we wanna hear, right? So now I know that even this, you know, uh, because again, before we had about 85% of these trees going away.
To the back of it.
That's MI, isn't it?
Which, which side?
To the west.
Property is.
West, that is an, uh, a non-platted phase for MI. They annexed it in, but I don't know, did they rezone at the same time, Alan, you know?
I, I'm not sure if they rezoned, so we're looking at this piece of property right here, is this what you're talking about?
The, the long to the west, west, not right there.
The west, that's not in the village at Commercial Point.
No.
None of that is in the village.
No.
None of this whatsoever is in the village, uh. Who was, who was on the west side of it?
He's true, yeah.
So you're, you're looking, you've got farmland all through here.
Yeah.
You got the Stowe Farm through here.
Okay.
And right here is what you just annexed in December.
Yeah.
Is that right there?
Point of reference, this is Tina Court. To where our building was going to be, where we have it projected, it's about a half a mile. So it's about a half mile as the crow flies to where, and the, the building was potentially taken out, this section.
Just taken out a small section right through there of trees.
Now again, I know.
Now, right there is a tree stand also to remember that was being left. That is staying there, so if you notice with what's going on here, you're kinda wrapping around those trees right there. Cause you're looking, they was talking about building there.
Right.
And now you're looking at building here and here, so you're wrapping around all them, all three sides, plus you got a buffer of those trees right there.
That's a big buffer right there.
It is a forty, forty-plus acres of.
Of trees.
Mature.
Mature trees, forest.
Probably the largest remake, largest tree stand in the, inside of a town.
And if, and again, if if this is, and again, I want, let me tell you this, I'm hearing that it's important that we maintain as many of these trees as possible. So we will go back to the engineers and the actuarials and figure out if we can take another building out. Because again, we, we did take out a bunch because we knew that there were other concerns, but we'll see if we can't take out the building that's impacting the trees. Because if that's what will allow us to bring a developer in, we'll give a shot.
Well, personally, from, from, I think what I've heard from other people around, is as long as you replace what you take out. With, with non-saplings, with like established trees, whether that's to go on up and wrap the rest of the property. I, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with that building. Because then we can tell people, well, for every one they're taking out, they're putting two younger or whatever.
Yeah, I'm gonna say this, and Billy's probably gonna give me a dirty look, I was a huge proponent of a lot of trees, okay? Um, I, I, when I was on council, I passed an ordinance that required a ton of trees. Now, I will say that subsequent council members, based upon new information, including what it takes to irrigate those. And the amount of water that was being utilized, diminish that. Should we need more replacement trees on the perimeter, definitely willing to, to, to look at that.
And and one other thing I wanted to touch base on, what happened, what's happening on the other side, I, I wanted to say this to, I will. The previous councils, the previous administration, and then this administration, the reason why we were able to do this and why the state of Ohio has basically. Commended us and all with, was because the village, the foresight of the previous councils and the administration. The, what we did was incredible. What's happening over there now and what construction is stalled, has nothing to do with what's happened in this room. Or that's it, macroeconomic factors of, and political. So that's, that's a whole different, we hope, but, but what, that's what we were saying, I know Laura was on council and Bruce was on. And Ross, you, you remember, all my speeches pre-COVID.
Yeah.
When we were saying speed, we needed, we had an opening. That's why we were saying warehousing. Now, we were able to get the land sold and we were get some of the buildings up. But then, I mean, right now, these dat, there's data, Columbus is rapidly becoming the data center hub of the world.
Yeah, with that from the east, I want to make us the Silicon Valley of the, of the east.
Well, there, so what's happening here is, we're trying to, we're trying, uh, we're trying to capitalize and bring the best. We already did, we already did on the first, on the first base. We wanna bring the best user, just like what we did with the, on the east side on the logistics side. We want the best partners for the village, cause we don't want second or third tier people coming in, you know, we want the creme de la creme.
As far as, I, I know you mentioned concern about multiples, obviously, we have the, the Kazooey Building just got a certificate of occupancy. Maybe six weeks ago, uh, so it, it's in the process of being leased. This building actually has a long-term tenant, but again, the nature of moving your infrastructure into a new hundred and seventy million dollar building. And, and building it out, that takes time, because you have to shut down your operations other places to consolidate here. So I believe that long-term tenant is slated to start in twelve to sixteen months. Um, so it's, promise it's not mothballed. Uh, it's just, it's waiting for, again, a premier tenant instead of just any old folks. Um, because that was such a class A facility, they had to go out and find someone who was willing to take care of it and put the money into it. And that means they have to, uh, get, move some stuff around and that's, that's what's taking time on that property. Um, but that's also why we're not, we, you know, we, again, happy to remove the warehousing from the side. Uh, because we don't think the warehousing is, is going to kick back up for a couple of years. We think it's a couple of year market downturn.
Or longer.
It could be longer, we're hopeful it's a couple of years. Um, but, so that's where that stands. But, uh, I, I, again, as far as the, the stand of trees here, um, we'll definitely go back and, and talk to engineer. See if we can, we can preserve it, even if it's still putting more trees on the perimeter, we'll see if we can preserve that as well.
And, and one of the things that, that's kinda interesting about this building, which are proposing, the buildings have a. Um, a smaller height, the lesser height, it's the other thing, so it, it's less of trucey, that's not something that's miles away you can see. So, I mean, that's helpful in the fact that it doesn't, it won't require or shouldn't require as much screening.
Correct.
And, and in that situation, I would certainly, I would certainly handsomely trade off to maintain that mature standard wood.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's kinda where I would come from.
How tall are these buildings?
I'm sorry?
How tall are they gonna be?
I, it's on the sheet and I didn't.
This cap, this cap's at sixty-five. Again, it's something that, uh, we bring, the, the end users vary, right? So when we were looking at the spice to the north, there was a new class of data center, they actually considered ninety-foot buildings. Council was adamant, not gonna happen, right? Um, so I think those buildings end up fifty-ish, but I, I don't know, I, I honestly don't know how tall the ones are to the north. I know they're under the sixty-five foot.
The ones we got there are.
Mm-hmm, I, I think that's what they're bringing in.
Okay.
They're gonna be shorter.
Okay.
I don't know exact measurements, cause it's, once we, we're not in that final design phase. I'm, I don't know if they've brought any major site plans to the village yet, Alan, no. So I, I can't tell you what the height would be, but it is again, something that has to be. So especially with the entitlement perspectives, right, there's a lot of, uh, once those entitlements such as the CRA and the TIF are put in. It gives the village an opportunity to make sure that not only are the buildings something that you like, but the partnership is something that you want. Because you don't, you know, it, it's, it gives you other layers of approval.
I will say, I think this council, you're, just to bring some of you up to speed, and I know Ross, you're probably familiar with this. This is probably the first planned district that we've ever brought in, that we didn't have an end user in mind. I mean, when your stuff came in, we knew, you gave us a plan, here's the warehouses. When the DHL came in, even though that deal fell through, we knew who the end user was, we saw the layout of the buildings, we put it all together. When that fell through, you came back and we amended the plan.
Right.
This here, we're seeing something here, which, I don't even, who drew this up, or do we even have an idea, would this even actually be close?
We, we have good confidence that it would be very close.
Okay.
Um, and. It's still open to tweaks, uh, but we, we definitely believe, um, we have hopeful end users, right? Um, and, uh, it was developed by Structure Point, who put this together, based upon a lot of, uh, understanding and study. From again, our northern side.
And with, with that being said, I think that we, council needs to be very clear. I went through here and I've got this thing marked up a bunch of different places, and I'm sure some of you have done the same thing.
What do you, you reference in the text?
The, uh, development standards text.
Okay.
Because once that is approved, it's kinda like that follows, that does follow the land. You know, we went down this road before with the DHL stuff and then it's like, okay, we got a different user, so let's do it. And I know it's been stated in Cal meetings prior to this, that they did, some of the council members did not want any typical warehousing. They was okay with data centers, but they didn't want warehousing. And I don't know, Bruce, if your thought is, we come back and we, do you wanna go through this line item by line item? Do you wanna come back and give set council something that we look at it?
Well, I mean.
Because I really don't wanna start any readings until we have a completed plan in front of the council, I don't wanna hold up your readings.
Could you give us a red line with them?
Well, I guess, real quick, let me caveat that. Assume, I, what I guess I would like to do is, let's assume that this no longer says anything about anything but a data center, right? Everything is caveated, this is data center use only or it's nothing. Because if it doesn't come in with a data center, we have to come back and square one for rezoning, right? So we caveated with that, how many of your concerns become alleviated? And what other things stick out to you that you would need us to, to correct, right?
And it, and I think that would probably be a good way to go about this, to strictly outline this is for data center use only. As you suggested, I've got a concern, or I, I, could be, um, where you were talking about the internal property line setbacks, talking about subdividing. Do we wanna, this council, I should say, it's not my vote, it's the council, do you wanna allow subdividing there, or do you want one end user on this parcel?
I think it would be best, and he also agreed it would be best if they had one end user.
I mean, that, that is definitely what our hopes are.
So it's like, this section three, you just take it out, hey, there is no subdividing, we, we don't even consider.
Okay.
Multiple parcels.
Think that you and I need to redline it, send it around to council and get an open discussion in a regular schedule, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, no, put us on a business side, I mean, you guys can discuss it, we'll, and we'll.
Yep.
Yeah.
What's the fencing, I just, just.
Fencing really depends on the end user, right, so we don't really have.
See, and that's why I wanna ask the thing, cause the, we always have a question about where we're gonna provide walk paths and stuff.
Well, they, they have, and so these, as you know, these are now under home security.
Mm-hmm.
So they have this, this fence standard.
Uh, that's what, that's what I was trying to get to.
They just go way above our.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to put walk paths.
No.
No, right, yeah, and right now, so there's no fencing variances in here, right? So right now, the fencing comes under the zoning code, so under our current zoning code. Any deviations from that would have to be brought to you as a variance.
Mm-hmm, I mean, just from.
And I think that's.
Standpoint for their security.
Yes.
Yes.
Is, is, was my question.
Mm-hmm, so they usually have multiple layers, it's, it's kind of, if you look over what they've kinda done, um, over on the Google site, right? So they have an exterior perimeter fence that's kinda looks like maybe a subdivision fence. Then if you look closer, they have a, a colored fence. And then if you look a little bit further beyond that, then it looks like a razor wire fence.
Electric wire, you don't know it.
But it is, it is done in a way to not be obtrusive, so it doesn't, you know, so they, they do, do it, they, they, they do it in an aesthetically pleasing way.
That, that was my explication.
Yes, and again, something that I would anticipate being brought to you at a major site plan approval process, where that would be a negotiation between the village. I don't want a black fence, I want a green fence, I know that was a, a point of conversation on the, the building's, uh, I think the bathroom body works as a black fence and the other one doesn't. Um, but, uh.
All right, we'll, we'll have it as a business item, we'll redline it and all the council can see the red lines and have a discussion.
And if, if it's okay, because I do know of two major changes that we need to consider. Is it okay if we resubmit with at least two major changes made if we can? One would be the, the, this image removing this building or making it out of a tree smaller, it would be removed or smaller. Assuming that we can make that financially feasible. And then the second piece will be, we will take out all, there's several spots in there where it says warehouse, but if data center, right? We'll take out all of the, the warehouse, but if data center, and it will just read data centers, that way you guys are working for that, so red line. And we'll give you that by the end of the week in very fast.
Should they take out the subdivide? I think, yeah. Here's, here's my question, if we take the subdivide out and you don't get one end user, can't you come back and we add it?
Correct.
So can't you take that out now and then it's not even an issue?
But then, again, it's something I need to make sure that that works from our, cause obviously we have to talk to finance people and those sorts of things to make sure it meets within their guidelines. But yes, we will, we'll look at that and see if we can't take it out as well in this one.
Jim, did you have a point you wanted to make?
Yeah, uh, there's a couple of things on the project that I need a question, first of all, I'll answer you about the trees. There is a, a zoning issue with the trees. And it states basically in there that they are allowed to remove any trees that are diseased, dead or burnt trees.
Right.
Okay, uh, then if they move other trees that are good trees, they have to replace those.
Right, right.
Not unless council okay's the P I.
Right. Council okay's.
Council overrides it.
Yep, correct.
And then, I was looking at this with the lighting issues and that, and this is something that you guys can think about. Who's gonna pay for the lighting and who's gonna take care of the streets?
There are no.
There are, there are no streets.
It's all private.
It's all private property.
So we don't worry about that.
No, 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 no.
Our security, everything.
No, no, nothing. The, that's why we like data centers, and again, I, I know some of you were here for this pitch before and some of you haven't, so we'll make it again, just so you know why we like the data centers. One, there's no impact to the schools. There's, uh, some impact to the traffic, um, during construction, obviously, we're bringing in construction equipment. But after that, you have no truck traffic, you have no residential traffic. These buildings are staffed by a crew of about twenty to thirty apiece. Um, but very minimal impact to the infrastructure. They also have their own private security forces, so very little impact from the police department standard. Um, they have very sophisticated, um, systems to prevent fires and those sorts of things. So minimal impacts to the fire department. But they do have substantial impacts on the backend property values that bring in money, obviously through a, a TIF. Or an NCA or whatever mechanisms this village decides that are proper to facilitate bringing in an end user and get us to that.
And were you done or you got more?
I, I just wanna know, cause I looked at the maps, what's a substitution area?
A substitution area.
It says substation.
Substation area.
And, and I gotta, with the substation coming in, with the property up north, and I know they had outlined an area for their substation, with this one's.
So that's.
Is that an additional?
It's, we don't know.
Okay, okay.
That could be, there could be some economies of scale, like they have expressed an interest in this property. Again, as Bruce said, once, once we get, once we get through the first green light, yes, data centers are good for this. We, then if we, we bring them back in, or if the village wants somebody else to, you know, I, I think they were a great, they're a great partner. And again, that's all gonna, we just need to get through the, this first hurdle and say, yes, this property is good for data centers. And then the rezoning is done and then, then, then they want to talk, they wanna be the first one to talk to us. And then if.
All right, get us, get us a updated Allen and I a red line, and we'll get it out to council, we'll be ready for a business item.
Next meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, they can, they can do potential service here from.
And as always, if something else pops up from anybody and you're like, hey, this is, this is not a, just call me, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the homecoming festival donation, Ross, you wanted this on here?
No, the, uh, the only thing I need to share on that was that I was approached by a, an officer of the, the community men's club. And they asked if we would participate as we had, uh, in the previous year with, uh, helping to pray the cost of, uh. Uh, the fireworks and other, other parts of putting on the homecoming. That was simply the question that was asked and, and, uh, I wanted to just bring that to, for discussion here at the meeting.
Well, the good thing is, um, it's verified by, uh, Canova, and they, they're donating six thousand dollars to the men's club, which takes care of their fireworks. Um, when we started this whole donation thing, we didn't have events in our town. So, you know, the parks committee has been, you know, asking for sponsors, we're using our park and rec fund, which we really don't wanna use a lot of that. Cause we eventually want to have a park. So it would be nice if, instead of helping other entities that we.
Help ourselves.
Help ourselves in those events, cause you know, we have to pay for entertainment. Um, you know, for food truck festivals, farmers markets, you know, we. We purchase, you know, porta potties for all of these events, I mean, that stuff really adds up. So that would be where my thought process is, is that since they are village-sponsored events. That the village actually sponsored them.
But how are they being funded now?
I go out and, and try and get sponsors or we.
Donations.
Yes, or we take it out of our park and rec fund.
Okay, and, and I think that's appropriate, I mean, that's, that's a kind of a kickoff thing. I'm, I'm hoping for the time in, in a year or two or three, as it grows, continues to grow, that, that, uh. A civic organization is formed that takes over, that's really not council business to, to do festivals and things like that. I'm hoping that.
May not hardly be a business, but I can tell you this community loves them.
Well, no, I'm, no, it's not, no, I'm not saying.
Just cause you don't come to them.
Well, I'm not saying, I, I do a walkthrough.
A run-through?
Yeah. Yeah.
Run-through.
Drive-by.
No, I'm saying, it's, it's something that seems, seems to be very well accepted, I don't have any, anything against it, I'm just saying is that, that you've done a great thing here with the startup, what I'm gonna call this a startup. I don't see long-term that this is something that, that needs to be, uh, a council function, except by association. I think we need to participate by, by funding, by helping, by being a part of the planning and things, but, but at some point, uh, if the community is seriously interested, the community needs to take responsibility, step up to the plate, and have a civic, uh, organization, civic group, that says, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take over and do these things, and, and we'll do the, we'll do the knock the old doors.
Could they be self-funded, I mean, if you charge for the food truck, you charge for, uh, farmers markets, plus?
We can't charge, because we're a government entity, we cannot charge.
We can't, if the village's got.
Well.
Civic, civic guy.
Yeah, if it was, yes, but then you have, we looked into that, you have to get an attorney, you have to write up your five oh one C three, and that's not a cheap process either, so.
Yeah.
Homecoming.
I, I think.
We can't go under their umbrella.
Is that what, is that what, uh, is that what Ashwell has done, is they have their own.
They have a five oh one C three.
Yeah.
For their, for their civic group, for their group that puts on that.
Yes. Yes, it's under, um, Angie and Jen Bob Welsh handle that, and I think it is, uh, tied into the museum. So, that's where their funds go, is, is to the museum.
The museum, yeah.
But I, I mean, I don't know, I, I, that's just my opinion, is I think that, you know.
I agree.
I don't know what anybody else's opinion is on it.
I mean, if fireworks are being funded, then, I, I would like to know what our money's going for, because, I mean, I've heard people say that they said sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars in their account at the beginning of homecoming, why do they need our five?
Yeah. Right. More than that.
You know, I mean, I don't know.
I'm not sure they did that well, I don't know, I don't know.
I can tell you.
Sure.
Bottom line was one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars in profit.
What's in your account?
Homecoming.
But.
Self-funded beers.
Well, I mean, you just can't say, okay, they made a couple thousand dollars profit, I mean, you need to look at what their expenses were and everything else, I mean.
That's right. If they're funded, then if we were donating for fireworks.
Right. Right.
Then we should see an eleven thousand dollar show.
Well, we, we didn't, last year, we did not donate specifically for fireworks, because that was a legal thing, I believe, that we were told. That we just made a donation to the club for the homecoming.
Right.
And that's where, that's where we left that, now, it goes into their, they have one checking account, it goes into their checking account, and what they write the checks for, for the homecoming.
Can we donate to police?
What?
Yes.
We donate to police, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, and that's, that's where I think that the village donating in-kind stuff, such as, okay, we'll see that there's police officers out there for, during the festival. The, the, the village used to charge the men's club, um, special duty rates for every officer that was out there, which I never liked or anything, but that was here or there.
Right.
They, we now supply the police officers out there, we don't charge for that. The, uh, I will say, I know that the extra water that's used is basically donated to them.
Yeah, we're giving them far over five thousand dollars.
And we have, we had an officer stationed there the entire time.
We had two most of the time.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, it's, it's just, I, I think those are the kind of ways that the village can really help, and I, I think those are the things that we should be doing.
And I think there's.
I mean, if they need to use the bucket truck, you know, whatever we can do.
Right.
Yeah, if we have some equipment, I know the township used to come down, and when they had to ditch between them and the school, the township would come down and clean the ditch out right in front of the homecoming for them.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just stuff like that.
There's things we can, like, volunteer, like, I always try, if, if I'm asked to work in the chicken noodle dinner trailer.
Yeah.
I do that every year, had Paula with me one time.
I think we should, we should donate services, to the point that, you know, because cash, like you just said, we don't want it goes for. You know, we don't, we don't want somebody to be able to track and say, the village money went for, you know, the, the buying of the beer.
Yeah.
I mean, but, nobody can say.
That's a good point.
You know, perception may be bad, you know, but the police service. Use of our, use of anything that we need, our street department, that's, that's things that we have expense anyway, it's not really costing us more expense, other than maybe a little bit of overtime for the chief, or I don't know if he, he does that, you know, as part of his duties, or, or what.
And we, you know, and like, for the parade, see that the signs are set out by the street department to get the road closed signs out, and so on, and so forth.
I will say, this year, we do a better job of having somebody sit up there.
Oh, great.
On main, because there were cars coming down, as the parade was coming around, and joining the parade. So, they put up a road close sign, but nobody was there, so, cars were just driving around it, and joining the parade.
I feel like that's how it ended up being through here.
The Christmas one was.
Yeah, that's what I should do. And I don't know if that's something that we ask the men's club, to provide somebody to sit there, or.
Typically, they do have guys that, once the parade picks off, are kind of running around from point A to point B, and we have a couple officers, typically at seven sixty-two, where you're coming up over the hill, where it's very dangerous. You don't want a guy sitting there in a golf cart trying to stop traffic, it's best to have the officer with the cruiser blocking the road.
Should we stop Jacky though, at the, at the car wash, so they can't even come up the hill? Because during the parade, there's no reason for somebody to come up that hill, they should have to turn it, the walker, yes.
Well, you put it there, they'll pull, they'll, they'll turn on the walker, they'll turn it into the car wash, and come out the other entrance and come up the hill.
Yeah, they would too, I was gonna say, they'd go through walker, come out over here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, I, I think that the village needs to do all that we can to help them with in-kind stuff, as far as equipment, officers, manpower.
Absolutely.
I don't have a problem if, you know, we had, if we was able to, send a man over to help them do whatever if they ran into a jam somewhere along the way, during the week.
Absolutely.
But.
As long as we have somebody that's qualified to do whatever they're asking, we just need to make sure that that, you know.
Yeah.
We don't have somebody that's non-electrician helping hook up, you know, three-phase electric or something.
We don't, we don't mess with that.
Well, let me tell you, my grandpa had me doing it once years ago, and I arced a wrench, never again.
Yeah.
Okay, so, anything else on that? All right, um, this next one, I'm just gonna give a quick review, because he did not send me his event stuff, uh, we'll save it for next month, this is the gentleman that came last year and put on the motorcycle show downtown.
September one?
Um, yeah, he has asked to come back again, he knows he has to come through and do all the, everything he did last time, but I asked him to kind of give me an overview of what he has, and he obviously forgot. So, um, I mean, it's of no cost to us, just allowing them to close our roads and, and stuff like that, so, I'll have something the next cow meeting, I'll email him and have him send it, but I just wanna let you know what it was about.
I guess my only concern with that is, I think we need to let current events come to an end before we partner with anything that has some businesses that maybe aren't in good light.
But we're not partnering with them.
But it was announced during that thing, that, that, you know, commercial point in this business, and this business, and this business.
Well, we can, we can make that clear, because all we did was allow them to close the road, and allow the, and no, no more than what we did with the five K, when the teachers come.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can, we can make.
Got them to file the application, offer a group of insurance pay-to-feet.
Yep.
Yep.
It was not a partnership, it was a true.
Right.
We followed the law.
Yep, so, we can make that.
Good.
Okay, the next thing is the GoGov discussion, did everybody get the information I sent?
Yep.
Ross and I sat with this, um, other O C B.
Jay, uh, Jay.
Yeah, and, you know, it, actually, I mean, you can see the price comparison is a huge difference. And we're not looking for the Taj Mahal, I mean, even they said, you know, we really don't have the population for needing something this intense. Um, plus, this one has a three-year commitment, the GoGov is thirty-six hundred a year, one-year commitment, we don't have to pay for any marketing materials. This one, for the first year, was twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, and we have a three-year contract, they discounted the first year of the support, which the support is free on this one, of sixty-four ninety-five. So, that second year, you can add sixty-four ninety-five onto that twelve nine eighty-five. And they virtually can do everything that this one can do. So, I, I mean, my.
I think for the size of us.
Well, and that was one of the things that, that we, we had talked about this too, is, I mean, it's, um, you don't, you don't take a three-year-old and, and give him, you know, brown state, I mean. Uh, you know, we need a little pad on here first, we need, we need to break, break into, find out what, what is going on with this thing, and, and, uh, what we looked at initially, the GoGov.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's very, I'm not saying parochial, but it's very understandable, and, you know, people of, uh, of, of average intelligence can make it work, and it's a platform that is really truly a social media-type platform, it's not something that's tied with another system, that's biz, whose business is the emergency and E M A and all that. It's something that is much more tailored to what I believe our needs to be.
Yeah.
At this point.
Bruce said we put our, we could put our water bill on there as well.
Yeah, he can, what, what he, does, he's the link, and it takes it to our website, which is exactly what this guy could have done, but for extra money, he could have added something on there, well, that's just, he can basically do the same thing. And they have, you know, unlimited support, unlimited training, so if somebody needs trained in extra time, they're, you know, he's here. And he said, you know, the big difference between platforms, which is what this is, versus, um, custom apps, is platform, if something goes wrong, it's wrong for everybody, like if a system ever happens. For custom, like, if we're paying twelve thousand, but say the next city or whatever is paying thirty thousand, they're gonna trump our problem all day long.
Sure.
We're gonna be last on the list, so, I just feel personally that we need to start simple and small.
I think it's a good place to start.
We at least have a year.
I do.
Maybe as we grow and.
Yeah, I mean, if we grow, and if we feel the need to really put this kind of money into it.
Did we figure out who we needed access to for this thing?
It would, well, definitely the mayor, um.
It would be through the administration office.
Administration.
Because council would approve it, get it set up, it's up to the administration to carry out.
Anything added on to it, I mean, any, anything we're putting on?
The operation of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ross, you made a good point, we need to crawl before we walk.
Yeah.
We have an option for free, that, that is the same type of thing, that can do all the announcements, we have a website, and if we put that thirty-eight hundred dollars into the website, they can now do everything that we're wanting to do on our website, I mean, our website needs work, it has security issues, you know, we have people that won't pay their water bill, because it shows it has malware on it. So, we have, we can crawl with something free, and see how the, what the need is, and then, but put that first year thirty-eight hundred dollars into the website we already have, and bring it up to today's times. And then we could, you know, not spend that thirty-eight hundred, we could upgrade what we already have, have a year free, you know, that we already have an account for, we just have to tell them we wanna use it.
Yeah, and, and I don't understand, that's never been really presented, because this, uh.
So, what do we have for free?
This company.
It's the Everbridge.
Everbridge, and I, I went in, I went in and looked at this, I, and everything on there has to do with first responders, E M A.
But, it doesn't do.
But they give us our own, so what they have there.
And we use it, that's what Wendy says.
Who, who manages it?
Well, we manage what goes on there.
No, that's not what I mean, not, not content.
It's a company that, that does Everbridge.
That's, 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 they have that available.
The difference.
Twelve thousand dollars.
The difference with this is that we can actually upload our agenda to here, the E M A guy was out there and said, we don't have that capability.
We can, we can upload those kinds of, it's in an announcement form, but I.
I talked to him after the meeting, he said, we don't have that, we don't have that, we, we don't have that capability.
I think he's incorrect, from somebody that does I T in the county, I think he's incorrect.
Well, I really, I think people like apps, I mean, that's, I mean, our website does need up, updated, and that was something that was gonna be discussed, Andrew wanted to talk about tonight, so we're gonna talk about that at the next cow, but, you know, Mayor's dealing with the cloud, I mean, he was gonna get that done first, and then, we're gonna move forward on the website, but.
I mean, I've never seen money spent on that first, that's something we already have.
I'm just one vote, but I think that residents would really like this.
I think they would like anything over what we have, that we can do it for free for a year, and put that money into a website, to bring it up to speed, you know, there are ways to have your website drive an app to where it's our app completely, and it's not twelve thousand a year.
But that's a custom app.
It's not twelve thousand a year.
This is, this is the information your son gave me.
I get it.
That's who I call.
I understand that, and he wanted to give you up here, but I, I mean, I, I have an app, I know what it calls, and it can be done to where we control a lot more of the security, but it starts with getting our website up to today, and not the nineties when websites were started.
I'm actually, I can't see it, the website, I've just stopped.
It's gonna cost more than that.
Twelve more, yeah, that's right.
No, no, not, not what he's done, I mean, one, it, it needs managed, and, you know, it needs updates more, uh, you know, without seeing the backend, or knowing how it's run, I wouldn't be able to give you an exact figure. But if you're spending thirty-eight thousand and money, or three, thirty-eight hundred plus that, then.
Yeah, I just, I've never touched a, what, a tech guy that didn't cost me five grand, I'm not really happy.
That's a smile.
But we're gonna have to operate again.
And I've heard, have you gotten any, uh, calls about malware or, or security reasons, I mean, there's security issues.
Yes, they have.
Who, who?
Who?
Steve breached, called.
I'll talk to Steve.
Uh, it shows malware.
He hasn't called the office, and like I said, that's, if someone's got a problem with something, I'll say it again.
Yeah.
You need to call the office, and calling and telling a council member is fine.
No, but he called the office, I don't know how long ago it's been.
Right, there's who answers the phone.
But that's, that's, I mean, he stood.
So, whether he, whether it happened or not, the bottom line is, you have to call the right people, and let the right people know. And as of, as we stand here tonight, I don't know of any malware, any breaches in security, we saw something, we talked to Paul just this past, last week? Two weeks ago? Called and talked to him, and he went through and looked at some stuff, and said, everything's fine. So, we've got an I T guy, which, the company was called Fusion Alliance, is who we've been dealing with, who put together, who got us all licensed computers and laptops. They have put together our email system for us, they have set up cloud storage for us, which, what, I mistakenly thought we could put up there and be ready to go in two or three months, it's just turned into a, whatever. It's a lot of scanning, putting stuff together and everything else, a lot of uploading, and they also offer website stuff, and we haven't went to that next phase, they've set up the, we're like, two steps in, he did, three, he did the licensing, he did the emails, he did the, uh, cloud storage, our next step is website, that's kind of.
In that price, like.
No, it's, we pay, we have a contract with them, we pay so much per hour.
I, I would be curious to having him look at the GoGov, or his opinion about using it, so, he's under contract with us anyway, he knows our system.
Give him all three policies, or all three options, and say, which one do you think?
Or has he worked with one?
Yeah.
That's, that's a place to start.
I could give him a call, and see if I can talk to him, and see if he's got some, if he wants to look at him, if he knows, has anything he'd like to input on.
He may have some experience in other, in other areas too.
If he does want to do like a Skype or something, I'd like to be on it, and he'll say.
Eric, you got all the information for the one from the state?
Uh, the E M A guy said he would get it for us if we just called, and told him we were interested in using it.
Everbridge.
We have Everbridge, that's.
I spent quite a bit of time on that last week.
Isn't that, that's what Wendy said she uses.
She said that's, that's our Nixle program.
That's what we are using.
It's separate from Nixle, they have Nixle, and then Everbridge has an app.
Everbridge is better.
Nixle's just a part of it.
Right, I don't ever get those Nixle.
I don't either, I don't want Everbridge, and we like.
But, and it was.
Or I will get them randomly, like, I won't get them for months, and then all of a sudden, I get one.
It was just kind of.
So, we will just.
From a legislation standpoint, what do you want?
Continue this.
Do you want legislation, do you want nothing, do you want more discussion?
If, if they want him to go talk to the I T guy, that's fine, I would, I would like for us to make a decision by the next cow meeting, because we've been floating this around since November, so, you know.
And the decision is just to grant Alan the power to enter into the Go dot gov contract?
Well, no, they want, they want him to talk to our I T guy.
No, no, I understand.
Yes, but yes, this, it will be, yes.
The decision will be, yes.
The legislation is, we hereby grant Alan the power to sign a contract with Go dot gov.
Yes.
Yeah, if it is approved, that is what we, we, we.
Yeah, it should come through, yeah.
I only have one thing out of additional business, and that was the one-way on First Street.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
I.
Thank you.
I think, um, we kind of talked about it last time, and it really just makes sense to make it a one-way, that's how it was, that, I don't know how it keeps us ever a two-way to begin with.
I don't either.
So, do we have the former legislation that made it a one-way?
I did not locate it, it might be back in the building, it was passed in nineteen seventy, so we're over fifty-year-old legislation, is what you're talking about.
Oh, goodness.
Nineteen seventy, it was, went from a one-way to a two-way?
No, actu- actually, nineteen seventy was, well, there was one from sixty-seven, and then the next one was seventy. No, actu- actually nineteen seventy was, well, there was one from sixty-seven, and then the next one was seventy. What they did, they never made it two-way. It's a street and it's two-way. They made Harsh Alley, Second Street and First Street all one-way. All one-way. That has always been a two-way street since it was ever opened up.
I could tell you, Tovin Estates is what they called, Tovin Estates, Mobile Estates.
So that, there's never been any legislation that made that two-way. I mean, when you have a street in the village, it's a two-way street. We pass legislation to make them one-way.
So should we make the other one one-way?
They already are.
They are, those are.
We made that one two-way for fire, but now the fireplace station's not there, should that not be two-way?
It still go back.
To be, to be honest, council never passed any legislation that I could find on that. It looks like they just put up a sign saying emergency vehicles will come in there.
So should we take that down, since they're not, the property is sold?
They're not gonna pay attention anyway.
That would probably make, that would probably make sense, since there's no longer a fire department there, at least take the sign down there.
Right.
I mean, that would make sense, but no, that street, there's no legislation that ever made it one-way or made it two-way, because.
Okay, so we want legislation to say, what street is gonna be one-way?
Third Street.
Is it third? Okay.
Third Street.
From third street. One-way, north, southeast, west.
It is, it is south, one-way south.
One-way, going south.
Yep.
From a two-way.
From.
With traffic going north and south.
From west side of the street to Harsh Alley.
Spell Harsh?
H A R S H.
H A R S H Alley. Um, the, uh, smartly. Not the person, uh. But that, uh.
All right.
Someone even.
Jan, is there a problem with O dot on that? Do you need any O dot approval?
That's on sale.
No, that, it's all in the village streets.
Don't need a traffic study? Are they gonna be responsible for signage?
Street department.
Responsible for signage, yes. Do we have signage put up one-way, do not enter?
Yes.
Take away from them.
Do we have to officially remove that stop sign or was that not about the dealer?
The stop sign would come down.
And so that, that's taken care of. So it'd be all corrective signage needs to be put in place in accordance with O dot manual, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was asking, did they have to have legislation to put that top up?
Where they don't need to.
Do not enter.
Not to be the other end.
Health and safety, there's one reading, wave readings.
Yeah.